Can we begin to start?
Yeah, fine.
I call the tax and planning board to order. Could you please take the role?
I can. John Spann, while this on.
Present.
Kerry Bigford, present. Larry Grant.
Present.
Dan Flegg.
Present.
Scott Whibley.
Present.
All present except Joshua Spooner. I don't see him.
All right, I haven't heard from him. Okay. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the September twenty second, twenty twenty two meeting. You all should have had a chance to see that. Is there any? All right, then go ahead and motion.
I'm going to read off the minutes of the September twenty two, twenty two, two thousand twenty two. Minutes as to minutes.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Being done, all in favor, all opposed, and one abstention. Thank you.
So, no.
I'm standing, sorry.
Wrong, wrong, yeah, it was, I fixed my motion. I started a little bit.
All right, so we're here for a public hearing. Topsco LLC had submitted, has submitted a proposed eighty thousand square foot supermarket market basket for review at one sixty nine Tops and Fair Mall Road, tax map R zero five, lot twenty one, B zero one zero. And can you tell us on who's on Zoom?
We are joined on Zoom by our peer review traffic engineer, Tom Erico, and our peer review engineer, Tom Sosier.
Thank you. All right, so sir, if you please introduce yourself and commence.
All right, good evening, Chair. Members of the board, my name is Doug Reynolds with Royal Palmer. With me tonight is Randy Dunton with Royal Palmer, as well as Jim Lamp and John Matthews from Topsco LLC. As you are well aware, we've been in front of you for I think the first time was November of twenty twenty one, well, we came in front of you for a sketch plan. And we showed you was a site plan not too dissimilar from what we're showing you tonight. We've gone through a number of iterations with town staff and peer reviewers. And we've, I believe, addressed most of, most of all, the outstanding items, or those few technical things that are still on the the conditional approval that the staff has provided. But I'll just go through real quick some of the larger items that, that are the differences between the sketch plan and the current showing. See, so I'm gonna just pull up this old sketch plan. And one of the, one of the, one of the first things that you may notice, if you're looking at the plans that we're providing tonight, the biggest thing is that we added a, we added a leg to the, to the roundabout proposed at the main entrance. This was to accommodate potential future development off of Tops and Fair Mall Road. They do have frontage on Midway Drive as well, but access to roundabout is something that we wanted to provide now.
So just define leg for us.
Oh, it's, 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 it's just basically the fourth.
You do have a fourth interview on that one. I just want to make sure on the record. Jim Lamp, I'm a professional engineer with LT Development, representing the developer, John Matthews, and also working with Market Basket. We've been working with the owner of one seventy Town Fair Mall Road. We do not have a signed agreement yet, but what we've done is, when we first came before you, there were some questions with the, with the state, as well as the traffic designer, thinking that you might want to plan for a future fourth leg for the property across the street. Their frontage on Midway is, is only like sixty or ninety feet. So if they had an entrance on Midway, they'd be right on top of the stop bar, and it really wouldn't work for development on their site. So we've been working with the owner. They've had a couple people with, you know, agreements, but so far, there's no real purchase of it. We anticipate that they're gonna give us a right of way to dedicate to the town, as well as construction easements to do that. But I wanted to just be clear, if they don't come to the table and agree that it's gonna be shifted back towards our site, which was at their original, but we have every intention of centering it in a right of way, providing additional right of way on our side, as well as right of way on the one seventy Town Fair Mall side.
Okay, that's been presented to the traffic reviews, well.
Yeah, right.
Right, so again, you can see what, what do you mean by the fourth leg here? Where it's, where it's, again, Tops and Fair Mall Road, the two main lanes going through. Our driveway to the Market Basket is this leg, and the fourth leg is across here.
And this is a roundabout, not a traffic circle.
This is a roundabout, correct. Not a rotary either.
Right.
Actually, it's a traffic circle.
It's a roundabout.
A roundabout, so, okay. If you remember, on our sketch plan, we had a right in and a right out access drive on the north side near Midway. We have since eliminated the right out, and we only have the right in from Tops and Fair Mall in this, in this area. And again, it, it was, it was something that you asked, and it made a lot of sense to eliminate that. Not too many people are gonna go right out of there. The, the, with an additional, a large additional item that we, that we added is significant amount of sidewalk. The, 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 the original plan, as you say, there's no sidewalk along this north side of the parking lot. The sidewalk up through the middle is, it's narrow. And we weren't showing any sidewalk along the frontage on either side of the roundabout. So, and again, our proposal through, through comments with staff, we have, we do have this, this full walkway all the way up the side, coming over to the front of the, front of the building. This, we widened this acts of the walkway, so again, it's now at ten feet instead of five. We maintain the ten feet of landscaping on either side of the, of the walkway. And, and we've we added, we added the sidewalks along the frontage. There are five foot sidewalks along the frontage. And as you get to the roundabout, we, we, they, they become a multimodal access, accessways, walkways to allow for bike traffic to come up onto the, up onto the sidewalk and navigate around the roundabout, having, without having the bikes having to deal with the roundabout itself. So again, that, that's a significant addition. One of the other items that we added was seating areas. Do you look real close, the corner of the building? We reduced a little bit of the building in this area and added seating, with a covered seating and, and this hurdle already.
Yeah.
In, in that, in that area, we also added a couple of picnic tables and, and bike racks of the outer, this out parcel, so to speak, parking area. So those are the, those are the significant changes from the sketch plan that you saw and, and, and subsequent presentations and plans. One other item that, that we did add is we do have a space for EV vehicles. We're gonna be installing the infrastructure. We haven't got a vendor yet, but that, that infrastructure will be there. So, so again, if you're, if you're looking through your packet, there's a significant number of waivers that we, that we discussed. We had a meeting in March that where we discussed the waivers relative to landscaping and such with the, with the, with the, with the board. We, we, we felt we received favorable decisions, not really official decisions, but favorable comments relative to those waivers. And, and staff has agreed and included them, and we have the staff report relative to this waivers relative to lighting within, within the staff report, again, some minor technical items and which they, which staff recommended we work with public works and, and staff to, to confirm that we're meeting what they require.
You eliminated one of the waivers, if I remember.
Yep.
Can you? I'm trying to remember what that was.
Yes. Okay, yeah, that the major, major streets games. I mean, yeah, no longer be aware of that, because we've got, we're, our plan to provide that, okay. So again, we, 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 we met with staff, met with repair reviewers, addressed a number of items with peer reviewers. Landscaping, a robust landscaping plan has been provided, even though we have some additional waivers for landscaping. But we do have a significant amount of landscaping, including we're, we're landscaping the center of the roundabout. And Market Basket will be maintaining all of that within the, the center of the roundabout, maintaining and irrigating. So we do have conduits for, for irrigation going out, out to the center of the roundabout. We, we coordinated with utilities, move some, move some trees around, make sure that the trees are on top of utilities. And there's a couple of conditions that we, you know, minor technical items that, that are included in the, in the staff report. And then, then one of the, one of the major hurdles that we've been working through is the MDOT traffic movement permit with the MDOT, and we are pretty much at the last hurdle. We've, we've done a significant amount of, you know, discussion, meetings and such with the DOT. And, and again, as you can see in the report, I believe, we're, we're pretty much hitting all of their requests at this point. And with that, we, we, we really appreciate staff's work to date, period viewers to date. You know, we hope this is gonna be a very successful project in the town, city of Topsom, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll look forward to your comments and questions. I think Jim wants to stand up and talk about a couple of items.
For like, can't help myself.
So that's before you do, you know.
Yeah.
You mentioned that, that traffic movement, I know we have period here as well, but maybe just give a quick synopsis of there's a lot there, right? To get the Winter Street connection and what you're doing there. Would you prefer Tom?
I mean, Tom can go over it, Randy can go over it, we all can go over it. If that's why Tom's here.
Okay.
If Tom doesn't want to speak, that's fine.
Rather.
I'm happy to walk through it, if that's, I mean, whatever the board wishes in terms of, you know, walking through the, the traffic requirements, a draft form from DOT.
Yeah, it would, I think it would be useful to maybe at least
see, see that, see that.
A little bit of a higher level than maybe the detail, but if you, if you don't mind.
Let me play him on the screen. Sorry, we have elimination line.
I'm gonna try to share my screen. And let me know if it works. Can you see my, my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, so good, good evening. Again, my name is Tom Erico. I'm a senior associate at TY Lynn, based in Falmouth. I've been the town traffic peer reviewer for a number of years. You know, the applicant has been working through the, the DOT traffic movement permit process. And for a number of months, we've been, we've been, as Doug indicated, we've been coordinating quite closely with them and working with the DOT regional traffic engineer on, on the project. They, they, I'm not gonna go into the study itself, but they, they, they basically developed a very comprehensive traffic impact study that evaluated roadways. You know, on Tops and Fair Mall Road, one ninety six Main Street down to Elm Street, so it was a pretty large area, and including Winter Street. We knew Winter Street was a concern, particularly of the neighborhood. And so ultimately, through all that analysis and coordination, we came up with, as Doug indicated, it's, it's still draft, that, the, the permit that I'm gonna kind of walk through right now is still in draft. There, there are a few pieces, and I'll talk about those that are still, I'll say pending. I think we're close. I, I, I don't see any, any issues in terms of getting to a, a final, final permit. The first, the first one is, and it's item two, is constructing a raised median on Tops and Fair Mall Road between one ninety six and Monument Place. And I have a graphic, if you can see that. Can you see that graphic? So basically, this is what it comprises of. This was, this, this graphic was developed by the applicant. And basically, it's related to sort of minimizing turn movements in a very complicated section of Tops and Fair, Fair Mall Road, one ninety six, McDonald's. And so really, it was to address safety concerns and movements in this area. So, so the intent is to, is to build something that's raised and physically prevents movements. This was part of the Topsom Fair Mall Road master plan, if you remember. Some of you may remember that, that document. But ultimately, many of the improvements sort of follow, follow the guidance and recommendations within, within the master plan. So that's, that's approved.
That was on that committee.
Okay, great, great. And so that was, that was sort of, that, that's, that's recommendation number one from the traffic movement permit. The, the, the second one is complete sidewalk connection, pedestrian signal equipment removal engraving at the south, southern corner of, of that, of that same intersection. I'm just gonna go back to that graphic. And basically, it's this corner near Arby's. And so for many of you that know it, probably you all know it, it's a, it's a, it's probably the most unusual corner that, that we had in Maine, and probably, probably in the northeast in terms of, in terms of the way it operates, in terms of function for a pedestrian walker around the corner. They're actually pedestrian signal heads, so that theoretically, you can get around the corner without being encroached by a vehicle making a turn. So part of the permit will be to look at and ultimately improve that corner. The desired option is to, is, is acquiring some rights from Arby's and basically relocating the, the sidewalk on their property. And so, and so that, that's probably the likely outcome. DOT is, is going to be providing an alternative, but for some reason, the ability to gain those rights becomes complicated. They're asking for an alternative option or alternative to, to, to accomplish the same thing. So that's, that's pending. But again, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape, you know, on, you know, as relates to that. The next requirement is at the Tops and Fair Mall Road, Winter Street intersection. Right now, it's, it's a, it's a stop intersection only coming out of Tops and Fair Mall Road. As part of the study, we asked the applicant to conduct a, an evaluation of, of making it a always stop. So ultimately adding stop signs on Winter Street. And they went through the analysis, they collected data, and, and, and there's pretty, there, there are certain federal standards that we, we meet as part of when you install stop signs or traffic signals. And in this case, the warrants were not met based upon current volumes plus the added volume from, from the Market Basket project. What we, what we decided was, well, let's require a monitoring study after the project is built to reevaluate those warrants, so that we can conclude whether in fact it is not warranted after the project's completed. So that's, that's the the next, the next item is at the Route one ninety six, I two ninety five southbound ramp. I'm gonna go back to my graphics. And, and this is, this is the graphic. I expect these graphics are in your packet. I'm not sure, but, but ultimately, again, this, this concept is developed by the applicant. There were some, some safety crash concerns at this location and operational issues at this, at this location. So ultimately, it becoming southbound on two ninety five, I'm getting off and headed towards downtown Topsom. Currently, there are two, I'll say inbound or eastbound lanes on one ninety six. The plan is to change that configuration so that there would be one lane, you know, from the west that would have its own lane continuing across the bridge towards, towards downtown. The other lane would be made a dedicated right turn lane, and if anybody coming off of two ninety five and headed to town would have their own lane. So basically, it's free flow. There would be no, no conflict. The, the main DOT has had a lot of success with these changes in the state. And they, they felt like this was a good solution to, to address some of the, some of the capacity and safety issues at, at that location.
And I, I actually made that turn this past weekend, and it's a really tough turn with.
It's tough. I mean, partly you did at an angle. Are you coming off the ramp? You're on a tough angle. You're looking over your shoulder. Speeds are high. It's tricky. So I think, I think that'll be a real nice improvement, you know, for that, for that location. And then Winter Street. Winter Street's got a few components to it. This is, this part of the text within the draft permit is being modified. It's, it's basically gonna be a menu of a few things that are gonna go on on Winter Street. One will be, there will be two upgrade typical crosswalks that will be provided. A new one, it's a Cocos Circle, the easterly leg of Cocos. So the applicant will be required to provide a, a, you know, painted crosswalk, ADA compliant ramps, and then signage for that crosswalk. There's an existing cross at Bigford Drive. We're being asked, we're, we're asking that it be, be confirmed that it's ADA compliant, meets, meets accessibility requirements. And then, as part of traffic calming, those were originally gonna be raised cross, crosswalks, but based upon some, some field investigations, we determined that, that, that may not be the best way to do it. So we're, we're suggesting that three speed tables, which are basically raised devices that slow people down, be installed at three locations along Winter Street. You know, basically, basically from Tops and Fair Mall Road, you know, towards, towards Bigford Drive. And so we're still working out the details on that. But, but I think we're, we're, we're in a pretty good place in terms of, you know, you know, finalizing, you know, finalizing those details. And then lastly, lastly, there are some impact fees, and these are not, these are not impact fees that are related to the town. These are impact fees that, that ultimately DOT is asking for as part of upgrading a number of traffic signals. So the applicant's being required to contribute forty thousand dollars for each one of these intersections on, 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 on item number one. And that's really to upgrade the signal system to become something called adaptive signals, which are, you know, current sort of high-tech signal equipment with certain types of detection that basically adjusts timings on a, on a very frequent basis based upon delays and queuing at the intersections. Again, DOT and other committees have had a lot of success with these types of signal systems, Portland as an example, Scarborough another example. And they're seeing improved corridor speeds and, and, and reduced delay with that installation. So the applicants will be required to contribute forty thousand for each one of those locations, and then twenty three thousand dollars for upgrades to be adaptive at the Route two oh one Elm Street intersection. So we, we think you'll, the, the, you know, the, those changes will have, I think, meaningful benefits in terms of reduced delay, even with the project, project traffic.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that's, that's it, and I'll stop sharing and open up to any questions or other presentations.
Okay, thanks.
Since we have Jim Lamp again, since we have Tom on, on the line, I'd like to talk to him about the, the corner of Arby's. Because one of the conditions, the way it's currently written, is that we have to have all our offsite mitigation complete prior to CFO and opening our store.
That's an M dot requirement, not the town's requirement.
So my concern on that is that, if anybody can picture this, is that typically the right of, where the right of way in that is rounded with the roadway. Arby's has a square corner, and it goes across the sidewalk, which forces people out onto the street and back around. The town is trying to get the right of way. One of the solutions, and the time, I, I, I don't know if I understand this, but one of the solutions apparently is to get rid of one of the two right-hand turn lanes.
Correct.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I, I I'm trying to figure out a solution that makes sense, not losing a lane because we can't get a, a two hundred square foot corner off of Arby's to, to do a sidewalk, complete a sidewalk next to the right of way versus moving the whole.
This is one, this is, Arby's is here, Tops and Fair Mall Road, exiting here, and
Can you show that?
And one night, and one night.
Yep, and we'll do it again. Hold on a second.
Which also has its own pedestrian dedicated lines.
Yeah, which we're taking down as a part of all that.
So what you're, just to confirm, Jim, what you're talking about is a potential contingency plan being developed by M dot on the chance that the, we don't get the treatment, which is currently in progress.
I get it. I just see this going to somebody saying, well, we don't want to lose a lane. And then we're, we're, this is something, we're talking about repairing a sidewalk that's been a condition for how long that, that is over half a mile away from us, that, you know, we're here to help them work with the town, but we don't want to be held hostage by this little piece of right of way. Our first offer was to give, you know, five thousand dollars or whatever it is to the town, and when they get the right of way, have that go it. But through, at better minds, it's, it's, they want us to do it. So we said, fine, but we need the right of way or an easement. And I'm just trying to, as, as Kate said, I'm trying to come up with a contingency, so we don't get held hostage by this right of way taking or somebody saying you can't lose an extra right-hand turn lane, then, you know, take one whole lane out to get that sidewalk to work. So I'm trying to give something in this conditional approval that gives us a way to solve this.
No, understand, so. Someone. Well, now, let me, let me say something. If anyone thinks it's inappropriate, please tell me, right? But I was on that traffic committee that, that previous study was done, that was several years ago now, in any way. So I'm glad to see some of it starting to get implemented, right? What I do remember of that corner, right? Because what sort of caught my attention is the amount of money that was spent on creating that little crosswalk with the actual traffic thing with people walking across and everything else, right? So I, my only thought to your, I'm trying to make your case, but that was done because that attempt to get the engine had failed the first time around.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Right, so if it failed the first time around, I guess we know that it's had a better chance of happening.
And there, I don't know how much I'm allowed to say, but it's fairly far along in the process.
So you had your hand raised.
I don't think the original owners of Arby's is around.
Okay.
And she's the one who was behind all the mayhem.
Don't, don't put that. A race that last. The mayhem.
Mr. Chairman, for, for instance, we're, it's gonna take us over a year to build our store. We have to build all the offsite. It's gonna take some time. If there could be, if the condition could be something along the lines of the town will make reasonable efforts to get the right of way or easement within, you know, a year and a half, you know, then we'll do it. But if it doesn't happen within two years, we should not be, maybe we write you a check for five thousand dollars, and you figure it out.
Except for back to.
It's a big project to be held up for this.
Yeah, understand. And I guess my thought, because if I understand right, it's not ours to approve this, this M dot.
But it was a town request that it would be put on, on the M dots before, and I believe that the way, there were a list that came, there was a wish list that came from the town. That's why we're doing speed bumps on, or speed tables on Winter Street. You know, that's not an M dot. That's a town request.
So let me go back to the peer review. If you'd like to make.
Sure, sure. I'll just provide a little bit of history and context to, to to this particular situation. I think your, your memory is spot on, that, that Topsom Fair Mall Road master plan recommended as part of a long-term vision is to remove one of the right turn lanes. And part of that, part of that had to do with, when Monument Place was constructed, it served as an alternative route to, to and from the mall area. And ultimately, it reduced that right turn volume onto one ninety six significantly. So the volume turning right is not of a level that requires two lanes. So part of the master, the rest of the master plan evaluated that, determined that you actually don't need it. It doesn't, it doesn't provide, you know, necessary capacity to make sure that intersection works. And so what we did was, as part of this application, we asked the applicant to evaluate it again with the Market Basket development to confirm that, in fact, that conclusion still holds hold up. And, and in fact, their analysis, the applicant's analysis concluded the same thing, that the change in delay of removing one of the right turn lanes is, is, we're not saying you should, we're not saying the applicant needs to do that as part of the project. But right now, we're working with DOT on But right now, we're working with DOT on alternatives for that corner. And that comes up as an option. And so, um, you know, it it's again, it's part of an adopted best of plan within the community. So so, you know, as a peer review, it's something that we, you know, I guess the community is striving to do. Which is why it's being asked as as for as as being included as a possible alternative.
Can I ask a question because I wasn't here originally? Can someone just please tell me what the actual problem is with that corner? Because. I'm just curious. I don't.
And so, yep, it's hard to, it's not quite perfect. But if you look at this, if you look at this aerial view. You can see a wall. There's like a little retaining wall that sits right here, and that wall. Prevents what you would typically have for a corner where a sidewalk would come around. With curbing. So it's raised, and it would continue to be raised away from away from traffic. Somewhat protected, pedestrians are protected. That retaining wall has prevented what would be a typical corner. And so under under the permit, if if the if. You know, Jim's right, if if everything works out fine and Arby's agrees to to allow it to happen, that retaining wall would get adjusted. And the sidewalk would be constructed, um, you know, as you typically see on a corner with a with a with a roadway intersection. Probably somebody actually walking around a corner has to actually get. Around that retaining wall is theoretically sort of, it's it's at a place where it's flush, got the same same elevation as the roadway. And so there are two pedestrian signal heads. Put in. It it, I don't even know if they're juice technically, but you would push the button, it would theoretically stop traffic from turning around that corner. So that you could then kind of walk to the intersection to get around the corner. It is, quite frankly, a very goofy situation. Um, and it and was identified as part of the master plan and like this has to get changed. And so I think we all hope, I mean, I mean, I mean, I, we all hope that. That the rights can be acquired and and the typical quarter can be done. I still say. That long term. You know, remove the right turn lane, you know, as per the master plan and as per additional analysis. Still makes sense as part of right sizing that roadway. Again, the master plan really looked at trying to improve the. You know, the roadway for everybody that uses it. And whether on bike, on foot. Um, you know, thinking about slowing traffic as best as possible. And so. Um, and that's still the long-term vision. You know, that's a community has for that, you know, for that for that quarter.
Okay, so to follow up, I'm seeing a safety issue.
Well, right now, right now, you hit a button just like you would if you crossed the main street and runs with.
Yeah.
Wait for the, wait for the little white figure to show up and tell you you can now. Cross six feet of street.
All right, I gotta go look at this one. I'm down.
Literally that that's your wall. Round it to get back on the sidewalk, so you walk out of the street to go around it.
Okay, so my only comment, maybe this is just my opinion, but I would think if there's a safety issue, a very small little corner here. Everybody on board would want this to happen and fix it. So I don't know what, I don't know what the problem is. I hope it gets solved, but it doesn't seem like a big part of it. Things to.
His problem is.
Them being responsible.
No, we're we're okay with that, but we are, we can't get right of way. We cannot purchase right of way, so. It's being kind of put on us. The. To wait for the right of way, and if it doesn't, then we have to worry, you know. And Tom's saying we can, we can shut down that lane. I'm fine with that. If if you guys want to take a lane out to get a sidewalk, to get three steps out of the thing, but it's a little weird.
None of us are traffic engineers.
No.
Is in the the Topson Fairwall Road plan. To, and honestly, those, you know, the two left lanes are backed up. Well past that uh that that. Green line, those two right lanes, you're, you know. Right, there's very, very few people up there, so.
Yeah, I just don't want to have a store built, and I don't want to have a store built, and it's us not having a resolved of how to handle this for. Three steps in the pavement that's been there since the mall already built.
And being on.
And it's, and it's, you know.
I.
Rather write a check and say, you know, when the town gets right away, go ahead and build it, but. I just want to have some help for that that one. I, that's not, I don't think I. We've had, we've basically bent over and done everything that's been asked. We we tried to address it.
Can you clarify again, you had a suggestion. Um, when you first started the presentation in terms of. Amending or adding a condition. For this particular purpose. Whether it was the towns made reasonable obituaries to acquire the easement within a year and a half. If that solves the issue here, let's just add something like that condition.
Yeah, and we just have to work with with um Randy Ollie and the the DOT on his letter because it hasn't finalized.
It sounds like at least. Kate has signaled that. Things are going in a positive direction, so it seems that. That signal plus. A reasonable condition. Would address the issue.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just hoping that five thousand dollars doesn't stop a thirty million dollar project, you know, that's that's I.
I don't think anyone would think that would be reasonable, so.
Right, that's right.
And and Tom, I. We want to work with you. We just want to have some options in case we get bogged down.
Yeah, I I think we can, Jim. I I I I, you know, again, we don't, we don't want to stop the project either. I don't think that's the intent of anything. So I think we can work on this.
Good, so did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to go through a a couple items. There were a few outstanding items on the um. Kind of the draft conditional. Write up. One was on page uh seven, item number seven, bullet number three, no outdoor storage shown. There's actually an outdoors, there's an outdoor display and sale area for seasonal sales. They do. Um, annuals in in spring, planting and whatnot. It's on, it's on the nine point plans. I just didn't want to be there, a misconception that there.
So cross to that?
It's it's identified on the plan, but I just wanted to make sure everybody up there.
We could cross to that.
Yeah, and and since Tom and I like butting heads, I wanted to talk about the two top bullets on page six. Um. We have. Since the beginning, we had a straw vote back the last time we before the board. You know, one was sidewalk along the front edge because we felt it couldn't go anywhere. Staff has asked that be replaced, um, Tom asked for it to be placed. We said, fine, we're, you know, we'll do the sidewalk. We don't think it will ever be connected to anything. I just want to be on the record that that we don't want to have any liability for someone walking into the sidewalk and crossing the street where they shouldn't be crossing. So. We're going to build it after the plan, but I just want to be on the record that this is a town requirement. And it is what it is. We're going to put lighting on it, but it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere on the. South.
But but the plans show crosswalk, the cross.
Uh, there's a crosswalk at Midway, and there's two, there's four crosswalks around the roundabout, but we're carrying it even further towards Winter Street, and it terminates. Just in.
Isn't there a crosswalk, there's a, isn't there a sidewalk?
No, no, that would be mid-block, and then, so it's just a sidewalk. It's it's there for future connections to another sidewalk. And we're fine with that. I just wanted to be on the record that that's a town request, not necessarily.
Where and?
Um. The two top bullets, um. And the reason I brought that up is. We had a right in, right out. We took that out. The town asked for a D cell lane on the right end. Then then the town asked for it to be, the state asked for removed. We've been changing the plans. The center island, we had a straw vote on um the landscaping linear islands. That sidewalk's been expanded to ten feet, so that whole island got expanded by five. Made us redesign the whole site all the way to the um. The right end entrance. Um. The sidewalk, obviously.
Which has been done and.
Yeah, and we've agreed to basically everything. My my point is that I'm actually. Trying to take a stand finally and and say, I I really, there's two top bullets. One is um a landscaped island, and I don't know if you can get it up here, Paul. Done. Um, there's just two areas that we have cut through the. I I've done about forty market basket sites. And and I think that this is the rather rather than a got to have, just a want to have.
So you're referring, Jim, just to be clear for everyone here, these are the comments from Tom America's Traffic Peer Review.
Yeah.
About the. End Island and Daphne Lockway, those two bullets on page six.
Right, the two top.
Is mine different than yours?
Yeah.
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 Oh, all right.
Well, I think that's a zoom in. It's a little, it's actually hard to claim what's being discussed.
Or in case I told you that. Okay.
It's some issues.
So so what Tom is asking for is. Now, how do I get the um? Okay. So what Tom's asking for is another landscape island right here because he feels that this is unsafe cutting through. And he wants to to bracket that with another island here. And he wants to do the other, he's also requesting we do the same thing here and here to bracket that cut through. In in my opinion, it's a safe situation. If those were two handicap spaces, you wouldn't have a a block off. It's it's. It's a way to cross across. If we. Add that island, we're losing spaces right near our door. And. It's hand shoveling. And handwork where we can plow that right now and take care of it and have it maintained. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying it's it's unnecessary. And I I'd like to request the board reconsider those two items.
Is there something else that could go there that's smaller, like a rail for something that would?
A rail, get, just if I put forwards in there, they'll just get. Nailed by the plow and.
It's so, so that's fine, but that's why we have our peer reviewers.
Well, I understand.
So so Tom, I guess since you've questioned a couple things. We've asked for. But you've already accommodated that on the plan, is that correct?
No, we have not.
You have not.
No, there's there's some, there's some amendments on the plans that need to be done. Sight lighting is one. Landscaping, we have to have a peer review. One of the conditions, peer review for that, add peer review for that. If if you're going to defer directly to Tom. Then I I have no. Because. He's not, he's not going to change his opinion. And that's fine. I just want to talk to the board. I designed forty market basket sites over the year. It's not necessary. I think it's overreach. And I, it's a, it's the one thing I've asked for over a year of talking to the town. So if you choose to have me put it in, I guess we'll put it in, but.
Thank you. I'd still like to hear Tom's comments.
Right, so I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen again. I think it's easier for me to explain it if you can see the the site plan. Do you see? And again, I don't know if this is the most current site plan, but it's. Pretty current, came from September, so I don't think it's changed that much. So. So really, I think what Jim's talking about are two locations. One is in this area here, and he's right, it's near, near the entrance to the store. But ultimately.
Oh.
Sorry, okay, the screen wasn't loading for a second. You're good now. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. So so you know, the first location is here. And um Jim's right, it's it, you know, I'm suggesting that these two parking spaces, this one and this one become raised like the abutting side. Here, so a raised portion would be here protecting pedestrians as they go from the sidewalk. This is the sidewalk. If you're in Midway. And you cross into the site and that, there are two basic ways to get into the site. One is via the roundabout, and one is via the crosswalk at Midway. You can come up this sidewalk on the main drive and then you come into the site. And so my experience with with parking, large parking lots. With developments is that people generally don't park very efficiently. And so in this case, somebody pulling into these parking spaces most likely will. Encroach into this area where pedestrians are supposed to walk. And so in my opinion would be if you're trying to provide the safest, best accommodation for pedestrians. You would, you would protect that space by providing a raised area. It it requires loss of two parking spaces, so there's a loss of parking spaces. Um, but I felt like given the size of the parking lot and the number of parking spaces on site, that wasn't detrimental to the project. Similarly, I suggest the same thing in the middle of the parking lot where this pedestrian aisle exists. Again. Just just basically mirroring what's happening on one side of it to the other side of it. So again, it's fully protected. You're not going to get somebody just basically parking in a weird, you know, there, you know, it physically prevents anybody from. From encroaching into that pedestrian area. That's that's my recommendation in terms of providing sort of best practices for how to. You know, maintain safe movements for pedestrians.
Thank you. You have other items that you'd like to present?
No.
Okay.
Are we going to talk about this?
We can talk about this then.
They don't have anything like that at Hanford, correct? At all. We don't even have pedestrian going through, you know, I don't, I don't even understand why they have that, but. And I'm, I'm gonna. Absolutely back him because I know. These guys have. Bent over backwards to be here in Topson, and we should be welcoming them. And I want to see this project, I'm being very honest about how I feel. But if this is something where. All of the experience that he has building these. Market baskets. Needs to be recognized. And I just think it's only him. That's my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but.
I I think Hanford is not a good example. Not, it was not, it was not built to the standards we have.
Look at, look at the Brunswick one, brand new. They don't have anything like that. And I don't think people are going to park on on that any way, any way that they would park on a handicap place, and if they do, they should get a ticket. So that's it.
I I tend to. We tend to defer to our. Our peer town, peer reviewers. And especially on things where they call out safety. Um, you got, I I I agree, you you know, you've got more than. Double, close to triple what the uh parking requirements are that we have in the town. Where, you know, and I know you guys at Market Basket prefer to have even more. But I think four fewer spots. Um, is not unreasonable, given that you have four hundred and thirty spots. And. I'm not so sure your hands show on those. You might, you guys said it could be hands on the whole, all the sidewalks. You're probably going to have a. You know. Little machine to to blow them anyway, so I'm not sure that's a valid. Argument for it, so. I mean. I I think Tom's good point, so. It actually looked pretty good at the middle part, might match up with what you've got on the other side. Which I assume is there because has some kind of safety issues too.
Okay. So. We can. Right now, we can keep going back and forth on.
No, I know, and and.
That sidewalk, but I guess I.
No, I was, no, I was, I give, okay, but I'm telling you. He's not saving the plans. We have an engineer standing the plans. They're they're good designs. Yes, it's always a better mouse truck. I just think we we have done everything we can with the town. And I'm asking for one little thing, and I can't get it. It's a little frustrating.
A little frustrating, but but so please done, we're done.
I'd like to mention one thing that we have done and. Um, you know, I don't want to get into the details of the parking waiver that has been pulled off the table. But there were a number of things on that waiver that we discussed in November and March. That are not being talked about now, and that is that we've. Kind of changed our definition of requirements. That is in the code. The code talks about ninety percent of the required spaces. Not proposed spaces. In the required spaces for this. Parcel. Based on our code are a hundred and sixty spaces. Which would be a hundred and forty-four spaces in that front area. Okay, you guys have gone to a lot of um. Extent to minimize the view, the the view of that parking lot, and I commend it. I think the landscape plan is fantastic. I I think the the levels and the views you provided have minimized. What the parking lot looks like from the road are great. But I, you know, I I, we aren't pushing on that waiver. Um, though if you request it, we'd probably give it to you anyway. But um, I, you know, I think, I think we're working pretty, pretty well. With with you guys on this, and I think it'd be, it's going to be a fantastic project. I I'm not sure why we're. Talking about four spaces as much as we are.
Right. Okay. So what I'd like to do, at least for now, right? Is move on, see if there's any questions from the board. Uh, of what you've just seen, right? Any clarification that you need, and I need to open up your public hearing. I'm not sure we have a lot of. Sorry. So we do have a couple people uh. Standing by that may have some questions, um, and anyone here that might have some questions, I guess. Why don't I go with the board first? Um, we have questions or comments that want to be. Brought up now.
You do have the architect online too, if there are such questions.
Thank you. Um, I did. Have a hand. Um. The uh, the the roundabout, as I understand it, this this type of layout with traffic movement with the roundabout integrated with the store and the parking lot. Uh, there's another one. And is it Southern Main or is it?
Better New Hampshire has a single access with a roundabout.
And it's very similar, very similar.
Same size, yeah, same.
Okay, as far as design and operation of that facility, has there been no issues? Is there anything you can take away from that facility that applies here in terms of?
No, I think that everybody's pretty happy with the way they turned it.
That's really all it happened.
I've been through it, it works.
Does it? Well, I think it, well, because it's, it's a roundabout, there's no signal to allow traffic to queue up, so there's a constant flow. So you can, with a, with a single exit, it works.
Right, and I think just locally, we've seen, whether it's on Congress or over in Bath, there was a few others. Yeah, the roundabout has actually been very effective. That's why I asked the question, it's a roundabout, not a road.
Right.
You don't want a road. So, questions on this side?
Well, I, I do for Tom. Can you hear me, Tom?
You're on mute, Tom.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I, I am no expert on traffic studies at all. But it looks like that the traffic study, at least when I was reading it, and this was the impression that I got, that there was really not a lot of look at the Thompson Fair Mall Road intersection with Winter Street. That it was kind of looked at saying, well, we really don't have a whole lot of information about this intersection. And therefore, eh, it's probably going to be okay. Is, is that a fair assessment, or did I misread something on that?
I, I, I think, I think you probably didn't, didn't get it all. I mean, they, they did, they did quite a bit of analysis at, at, at the Winter Street intersection. They, one, they collected current information, traffic volume data. Then they loaded traffic from the Market Basket project, and then they modeled it. They actually did a, what we call a capacity analysis, a sin traffic model to see how it would function. So they did, they did pretty, pretty standard traffic modeling analysis. And then lastly, they did, as I indicated, they did a, previously, they did do a warrant analysis to determine if, if stops, if, if, if it made sense to make it a multi-way stop intersection, adding stop signs on Winter Street. And so they did quite a bit of work at that location. I think basically, maybe that, maybe what, how you, I'll, I'll say read it, was that there really wasn't much they could do outside of, you know, that, you know, when you have a, you know, a, a three-way intersection with a stop sign, the next incremental sort of improvement is, you know, thinking about maybe, you know, multi-way stops and then signalization. You know, once the multi-way stop conclusion was sort of eliminated, there's not much else they can do. And I should note, they are improving sight lines. They're gonna do some clearing. You know, looking, looking to the right as you're coming out of Thompson Fair Mall Road, so they're doing some, some work in terms of improving sight lines. But they, they did a, they did a, it did a lot of work there.
And so before, you also, you mentioned the warrant, and I'm like, sure I'm using the right terminology, but anyway, when they looked at that, they, there was some indication, I think you said that they were going to do that going forward as well, just to reassess it? Is that correct?
Right, so, so one of, one of the conditions within the DOT Traffic Movement Permit is to do a monitoring study of that intersection following occupancy of the store. So they'll go back to that intersection, they'll collect additional new data with the Market Basket traffic in the intersection, and then go back, evaluate that, that warrant again to see if the stop signs are needed.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Larry. Oh, that's fine. So was the assumption made that most of the traffic leaving and going to Market Basket would be coming from the one ninety-six end as opposed to Winter Street end?
More traffic would come from the one ninety-six end. I don't remember the exact distribution. I mean, they had a reasonable amount of traffic going to Winter Street. I mean, anybody, I mean, I mean, you, you all know Thompson as well as anybody, but, you know, people are gonna go to Winter Street to head towards Brunswick or, you know, other parts of the community to the, you know, sort of to the northeast. And so they had a reasonable amount of, of traffic going on Winter Street. We went through, you know, a number of meetings with DOT to make sure that those percentages made sense, and I think they landed on a pretty reasonable number.
Good, because I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, I already know the River Road into, into Winter Street, obviously, at the railroad track. You know, the changes, there's already a shortcut for anybody coming from the Lisbon Falls, Savannas, you know, that, that direction. And I know it already, people are, people over the railroad tracks. Supposedly it goes down to a slower speed, but people are doing forty when they come up to that intersection.
Sure, sure, yeah, they're, they're going fast.
As well as people not, not, not assuming that anybody coming out Winter Street to River Road is, is actually going to go straight instead of turning into Thompson Fair Mall. I'm surprised there hasn't been more accidents then, but. Okay, I, I think that answered my question, Tom, but, and I saw that it was supposed to be like a six-month evaluation afterward.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions from the board? All right, seeing them. Public hearing, anyone in the audience, any questions, comments, concerns that they'd like to express to the board? And did we have anybody?
If anyone on Zoom would like to comment, please raise your hand and I will allow you to talk.
Well, not on Zoom, but I.
Well, you were here, so come up, please. Please identify yourself and not that we don't know you.
All right. Mark Ponzianni, we're trustee of the sewer district. And there are some things that, that were quite concerned that we have with the sewer district. But we have met with Jones putting this together, and he knew where we were coming from, and he took notes, and we had a great breakfast. But before I get into an awful lot of this, I did a little leeway.
So, before you do, I'm just ask, because Kate sent out something today, and there's an additional condition. I assume that that's as a result of.
Is that to dig the stub up? Yes. For us to start, that's good.
Okay.
And I'll explain why.
Okay, so go ahead. I just, just want to make sure that we're on that same discussion.
Well, that's one of them. There's other things on there that, that were a little bit inspection too. But I'm gonna stop. Hey, we're gonna lose you, I understand. And from the sewer district, Tony, thank you very much. You and Stewie Kay and Kevin Overeem worked very well. And you and I only had a chance a couple times to match up down the treatment plan and whatever, but you're a loss to the town.
Thank you, I appreciate.
It was unanimous.
Mark, you're a loss to the town. You never have.
You're right.
On that set of plans, and the reason why we talked about why you can draw all you want, but that stub from the manhole into that carpeting, maybe it's fifty, sixty feet, we cannot guarantee that elevation of that stuff. And we explained it to them, and it is deep. When that road was built, I knew there they took a height on from Portland, and there was, it was filled in twenty feet. Jet manholes stacked up on top of them. I mean, so where you, that's the key to this whole thing. The elevation of the building, you can't have the sewer running back. Sewer's gotta run to that street. So, you know, somebody's gonna look kind of funny if, if he can't get that sewer to the street. He's gonna have to either lift the building up or gonna have to pump it, he's gonna have to do something. So, we asked, was there an alternative? Now, when we get our first set of plans, we made red comments on everything. Okay, and this is the first time now, when we get the new set, the stuff that we had put down there isn't on. And that's what we were disappointed with, because we thought that we made some nice suggestions. And one change that's on here, Ronnie can help me in this one, but oh, oh, five is you lay snow pipe, no shallow, no flat than oh, oh, five. Okay, Danington too. But that was changed, and our engineer said you do not change that, oh, oh, five. But the new set of plans, in the middle of that long hall, across that parking lot, is changed, is a little bit flat. So, hopefully, when they did that stop up, they can figure that it's gonna work. So, that was one. And I was glad to hear about the trees, because, again, the water district, same thing, water district talked about trees not on the line. Because, you know, you gotta maintain this stuff. Somebody's gonna have to. Now, even though this isn't going to be owned by the Thompson Sewer District, we still have say in how it gets done. Because they wanna hook into us. Now, if they had their own system, now we would step back and let it go. So, that's another reason why we're considering an awful lot, that we want it done in our way. Now, we made a suggestion to them too. Now, now there's some history here. When that road was built, they, they got into real snotty blue clay. Not only were they built the road, when Ronnie built Cockamamie up the Schmitty's, he found out that it's snotty clay. When they built the bi-pack in the road by the bridges, diving barriers and machinery, had to bear the hell with time getting it out of there. So that clay is in that area. We asked for the boring. But he drilled now. He stewed late.
We have a full jet deck, we can get it done.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know you'd ask for it.
Yeah, well, we did. But no biggie, we just wanted to see what we kind of found out. So that was, that was one of the other little things. We kind of wanted the boring. Just to see where that blue clay is. So we made a recommendation, and I can remember exactly what I said. I said, look, I'm not holding a gun to your head, but I said, we suggest that you wrap this pipe with stone in, in every road fabric. Keeps it from settling, keeps it from changing. Because when the Mall Road was built, when Conover did that down through there, three times they had to change the piping in that section because it's spout, it moved because of its force order. So, did we say you had to do it? No, but we sure recommend that you do it. So, when, when, when you look at the plan, you see where our comments were, but, but now you don't see, you know, you can kind of lose it a little bit. And, and again, you would see Stewie Kay here, Stewie's got some real serious issues and things that, like that, well, not the same, but anyway. That's why I came. But this is a great profile, what we've dealt with. They've been very good. And these aren't serious issues, but you ought to know them, the one in. And when Conover came to town and did all of that work up through there, they brought in Home Depot, brought in Target, all of that. They changed the roads. But the coordination that was done, we've gotten away from that. And it's too bad, because it looked to me as though on that plan, the state's getting all their money. The only thing we're gonna get out of it is a few tax dollars, huh? But, but the states, there's so many listings up there, it's pretty hard to keep hitting them in the wall and hitting them in the wall. But, but before, we always got together, all, everybody that was dealing with the developer, we dealt with him, and with the plan that came with us. And it was, it, it made, once you make your case to them why you want some things, they have to answer to people, and they'll go back and ask their questions, and their board then will approve it or not approve it or whatever. But, but the more that you bring the town in on the water district, the sewer district, you know where everybody's coming from. That, that, you will go a mile, go so much further when, when you're all there, and you have that opportunity to share. But the word that you were looking for was eminent domain. Don't forget that.
Let's don't talk about eminent domain grant. So it's. I assume the public hearing is still open. Did you want? Did you want to make a comment now, or a little bit later after I see if there's any other comments? I would probably, all right, or is there anyone?
We do have a hand ring on Zoom. You'll have to unmute yourself, sir, so we can hear you.
And state your name.
And please state your name for the record.
Edward Ezzard at Dear Run on, on Peak Isle, and not Dear Run. I just have a quick question. What would be the hopeful result of this meeting? It's a conditional permit, is what I've heard. What would that allow if it was granted? That's, I'm just trying to figure out where this, what the end result of this meeting might be. Thank you.
I'm not sure where conditional comes from. But this isn't a conditional. This is, they have proposed it, and I guess we could go through the whole thing, but this is the site plan approval. So it would be approved, an approval for them to move forward.
He might be referring to the conditions at the end.
Yeah, when we do approve a site plan, it is approved with condition. And I think that's what he must be referring to.
Okay, Meg. So, at the end of this result, the end of this meeting, you might give them permission to proceed with the whole plan. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Zoom questions or comments?
Anyone else on Zoom want to make any comments?
All right, anyone here in the audience, questions, concerns, comments? All right, unless I think I'm gonna close the public hearing. However, if after you heard what they have to say, you want to speak again, I'll let you speak again. Hearing is now closed, so you, you had a couple comments? And, and maybe Tom Sati, if you wanted to make a few comments on that as well?
Just, just to talk about the sewer district, I did just look at the plans, and yeah, there was a couple. We meant zero, zero, five, and, you know, we, we wouldn't do that. That, we'll, we'll fix those.
Okay.
There, there, I, I just, sorry, it's like, I never go less than zero, zero, five, I want to. So, and, and again, if, if we have to dig a little bit of that stuff out, we'll dig a little of that stuff out and get a little bit lower.
All right, so you, you already have a condition as far as, you know, dealt with that, and you indicated you were gonna provide the boring?
Yeah, we'll provide the geotag, whatever they want. Okay, all right, good.
Tom, so did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think it's pretty important just to get that test bit done and see what we're dealing with as soon as possible in the process.
Okay, good. All right, but as far as the way it worded, as a condition, you're good with that, correct?
Yes.
All right. So I'm back to the board. Any additional questions, comments, or whatever, or, or you know, position to go in and make a motion?
Well, I think I, I would just say, just reading through all the materials and so forth, but I just feel like it's been a very comprehensive process back and forth, the staff reviews. You know, I think the applicant's been accommodating. I think it's a good project. Certainly, there's always gonna be traffic concerns whenever you have a big project like this. But I think overall, I think the, kind of the peer review process and staff process, I think has worked out well, from what I can see.
Other? Not to get back to the parking issue, planter, however, if there were a compromise, and if there was an idea, I think it would at least be worth bringing it up. I don't know if there's something else that could be done to separate that. I don't know if there's something else that could be done to separate that. And I just wanna say, I am the shopper in my family and I do shopping for other people. And when you go into a parking lot, I do not go across the little pedestrian parking spaces. I know that it's wonderful to have, but most people, when they come out of the grocery store, be lining for their car. And that's all I'm listening.
My, my only thing, please go ahead and.
It'd be really quick, and I think, Tom, I've, I've been thinking about, I just don't like the two islands. So what I think I'll, I'd like to do would be to make those double wide and handicap ramp up across and back down. So you're actually entering a landscaped area rather than having pavement across on both of those. I think that should probably, but dress your concern. But basically, you don't go across the striped pavement, you basically enter a sidewalk, go across and exit the sidewalk and come to a crosswalk.
I, I would be fine with that.
So I, I think that's better than having two islands tend to be your park. So on that, I also wanted to mention that, you know, when we started this, you had a planner and you had an assistant planner. And Kate has done a really good job. It, it's a lot to absorb, and she's been a good sport dealing with me.
For a single building, it's a complicated project.
This is a very complex. Thank you. Okay, so.
Well, I, one thing I, I think would be worth doing is, I do have some, I have some questions. They're, they're based on individual waivers. And I think we've got to take the waivers before we make a motion anyway. So maybe we can take each of the waivers as a group. Ask questions we may have.
So maybe whomever.
So maybe.
I'm gonna talk in a move, so I'll come up and try to give the answer.
Want to call the lighting waiver?
Yeah, that's the first one on the list we've got. So my, my main question is, is we, we didn't see a lighting plan. I know we have the waivers.
There's a little lighting plant submitted. Yeah, but.
It was in a previous.
It was original.
Yeah, so, okay. So what we're doing on that is we've added the sidewalks along the frontage. By the regulations, we're required to have lighting on that. My site lighting guy really was kind of gone, he's gone silent on me since our last meeting. And then I've been hammering him, believe me. The issue is that there's, there's some very definite requirements, some, some brackets that the, the lighting has to be in as far as how, how dark or how light they can be. And it's almost impossible with the nature of site lighting to, to be able to nail those. So there's gonna be some areas where it might be a little hotter, which is a little brighter than, than the regulations. You know, there's a 10-foot candle requirement. Then there's some areas that might be a little bit darker. But we're gonna meet the intent of the regulations. So the, the Kate wrote out to say that we have our designer. We're gonna, we're gonna give the town funds to have a site lighting expert to just review it and make sure it meets the intent of the regulations. But it's really hard when you have like, you know, at an entrance, it has to be between five and 10-foot candles. At this location, it's between, you know, point six and point five. There's always gonna be a little bit of difference on that. And we're gonna point those out on this plan that we're working on right now. And then the town's gonna hire somebody to review it. And say basically, give the nod that we've met the requirements, you know, as far as the intent of what the requirements are.
So, Mr. Chair, for the benefit of the board, site lighting engineers are hard to come by, but we are in the process trying to retain one. We're not, we haven't retained that individual yet. But Tom Sossier has recommended an individual, and we are trying to engage that individual to conduct that analysis.
And, and that's the reason it was written, the way it was written here. To have them finalize things and get it reviewed with an expert in that arena.
Right, it, it is, typically, we would provide some suggestions on that to a plan. So I just wanted to bring that up. And obviously, none of us are lighting engineers here either. But I, you know, I wonder if part of the hot versus safety, you know, obviously, the goal is to have safe light.
And, and. Yeah, and that's. And that's all. Some of this is actually less than what we'd like to have. Like, yeah, what you have in the parking lot, it's, it's not as bright as we'd like to have.
And, and, but at the same token, you, you, depending on the, the height of your light fixtures will, will allow you, you know, the number of fixtures and the height of the fixtures depends on how hot or, or averaged the light can be. So I'm, I'm hopeful that the, the, our lighting engineer can work with you on, you know, finding that sweet spot where maybe they're not quite as high as you want them, and you have a couple more and can diffuse the light away from those hot spots. So we, we've found that, that 30-foot height average, so a 27 and a half foot pole on a 30-inch base is, is the best. But we've had sites where there are under power lines, and you have, you have to minimize them to 15. You end up with a sea of poles. And it, it just is not a, it's not a good look, even though it's more consistent light on pavement because it's lower and you have them tighter. Having lower poles, it, it, there's a compromise. At some point, you, you don't wanna have 70 poles on a site, you wanna have 30. And, and I think we, through all the years that we've done this, we've hit our sweet spot. And these are very low-profile poles, they're all like dark sky compliant. And we've got a very nice decorative pole, but I think we have to work with the town on what they want to help by the sidewalks and around the roundabout just so that it, it matches what it is. And I, have I sent that to you, the detail of that? Because I can, I can send you what our typical pedestrian pole is. Just, just so you can maybe give it to your consultant when you get there. But I hear you, I hear you, but I, but there is, there is a point where even if we had all the low poles and everything, we still wouldn't be able to stay within that bracket because it's so definite. And, and there's, there's always gonna be some areas where we're gonna be able to. Those are the only questions I have on that. So that was the first where.
Do you want to talk all three or take them on?
Why don't you take them on a time?
Okay, spin. Okay.
I think you make the motion.
I guess the question I, I have is, you know, I guess I'm channeling somebody who used to be on the board. But is some of this still half-baked as far as, you know, what the plans are? I mean, I'm not opposed to project, but it's just like, been reading through, it's like, okay, we're gonna get a site plan for, there. Peer review lighting engineer, then another one has somebody else. So I'm just wondering, is this something that we should be working and voting on this evening? Or get some additional plans submitted so we could actually see what we're voting on?
I, I guess I'm giving my opinion. I think they provided a lot of information, and there's been a lot of peer review of a lot of information. Correct, right? Correct, this is a very specific arena, right? And so in order to make sure we are doing correctly, we thought it was important to engage a lighting engineer, peer review, to do that portion of it, right? So, and as you know, typically, in most of, I won't say, I shouldn't say most, I just say, in a number of the, the motions we make, we still ultimately default to Sossier and the peer review technical issues that they're still working, right? So because this was a larger project, it probably has more than we will see in some of the other projects. But I, I think that we'll refine moving forward, right? But I guess I, I'm not the only speaker here, so, but, you know, from my perspective, I don't think it's Catholic. Okay, but a lot of the times, we've been, recently, we've been going side of the dots and projects too. As far as how it translated into reality. Remember, and, and I'm not wrong on that portion, but that's what Rod had brought up with a couple of projects where, when it got out to the construction meetings and so forth that they did, there was a little bit of a misinterpretation there. Which I think he's put a few, and Kate has put a few. Bootstraps and whatever to, to try to avoid that, which is, which is, it was a real issue, I agree. Guardrails.
Question was off the top of my head.
It was treatment, yeah.
How many market baskets are there in May? Two? And how many messages?
Probably forty plus fifty. Forty or fifty.
So anything else, or is this store gonna be 24 hours or?
No.
Now, when Hannah put years ago, they redid their lighting because they had a bunch of elderly people were having trouble walking through the parking lot at nights. So they, they put brighter lights, but after the store closed, they shut a lot of them down to keep it.
Yeah, they do security lighting. They, they, that's gonna be in the program that they will, they will, you know, essentially shut down half the lighting or dim it to half level.
Okay. So I'm good, is the board good?
Yeah, I mean, I, I take Larry's point. I think we, we've dealt with that with a number of projects. I think this is probably, we'll, we'll talk about the landscape waiver next. I expect we'll have more answers to at least my questions and who else has questions. But I mean, in this one, I think we defer to the, the expert anyway on this one. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable myself. I think it's a valid point that, you know, you can bring up for up and the not.
I, I, I understand the term half-baked, but, and I've been called worse, but listen, we are getting into like the nitty-gritty details. It's guaranteed, what you have in your mind on this, it's not gonna change from that. There's gonna be some really minor things that will happen. But you, what you're, you've seen, the renderings, it's gonna be very close to that. This is like talking about the, the diameter of a pipe underground. If you can get it right, it's not something anybody else is gonna be bothered with, it's gonna be done right.
Actually, it didn't mean half-baked. It was just, that was a phrase to some other members of the board.
You missed a point across.
Would, would relate to because of a prior member. I'd say you're 25 percent.
And maybe the reason I ask why this, how many market baskets are in the New England area? It's because we're not dealing with a one-off or somebody that we've never dealt with before. Or not, not us, but market baskets name and their reputation and all the other stores that they've developed. I think that's why I don't feel hesitant at all by manipulating.
And in response to that, I dealt with a lot of market baskets in different locations. And remember what it was, what was this?
Okay, are we ready?
I move that board grant waiver request for 175-9F1, 175-9G2, 175-9H4, on the condition of a peer-reviewed lighting engineer is retained to work with the applicant and town staff, lighting plan that meets the intentions of the ordinance while addressing the site-specific concerns.
Also, can they? Okay, could you? Did you get what you needed?
Yeah.
Did that, did that say at the applicant's expense?
Yeah.
Yeah. In fact, I wanna make sure your slide motion said that, so, okay. Alright, so we have a motion, a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, or unanimous, thank you. So, second item, landscaping standards. And I noticed that you said you had some question.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Good.
Now, you're welcome to. But it's got to live.
Okay, so on, on this, I saw the updated landscape plan that was submitted on the 30th of September. Those will be the plans that are submitted and discussed with the landscape engineer or?
Yeah, the, the issue on here is, is, it's really more three counts and types or anything like that. It is like the first 175-10C1. You have kind of conflicting requirements in the regulations. We're being asked to save trees within the front setback, but we're also being asked to plant tree trees. We're saving the trees on either side where those big ravines are. And that leaves only a certain amount of our frontage that we can plant the street trees. That, that equals one every 30 feet, and it actually comes up to be 17. So we're using the existing vegetation to meet the street tree requirement. Because you don't want to plant trees in mobiles. I, I guess that's as simple as I can put it on that one. Then there's another discussion about trees in the parking lot. And because of the, the light configuration, we have light holes that are in landscape islands. And we don't wanna plant canopy trees underneath those. So what we're doing, we're, we're not planting them there, but we're making that count around the edges of a parking lot. So we, we're, we're not taking trees out of the design, we're just putting where they won't interfere with site light. So that's, that's the second one. The, the linear island we talked about the last time we were here, that actually was a 20-foot, five-foot island with a five-foot sidewalk. So we had 10 feet of landscaping on either side. Staff asked for it, and also the traffic engineer asked for it to be a multi-use path. So now it's 10 feet, so we widened that to 30 feet. So there's 10 feet of landscaping on either side of the 10-foot sidewalk going down the middle of that. Yeah, so the next one's the street trees in the landscape island. We just relocated those locations. The, the next one is the 80% of the, the trees in the front setback. And we've identified on the plan where the trees would be saved. We listed into the survey, we're just saving the trees where we're, we're not doing the concerns. And maximizing that as much as possible. And I think that covers, is that all?
Yeah, I, I mean, my, my question is just that, is that plan submitted on the 30th, goes to file? I mean, my, my main thing, I, I agree with your points here.
I think we're, I think staff is just, sorry, I think staff is just looking to say, is, is that reasonable how we're addressing these? And they're gonna have a landscape architect say, yes, you know, or maybe, maybe you plant a lower, more decorative tree underneath the light holes that will, will allow light to go through. I, you know, everybody has a different opinion. But I, it's gonna be darn close to what, what's on that plan. It might be a tree shift a year.
Right. What I'm really getting at is that first one, which I agree with you, that the 17 elm street, the, the 17 trees planted out front is a valid approach, given you're keeping the woods on the north and south side of the property. The landscape plan that was submitted on the 30th clearly defines what trees are staying.
Yes.
And that's not gonna change. It should have been more direct with my question.
No, there is, there's no reason to change the plan.
Okay.
Right.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm specifically related to you, but it is specifically related to past.
Right. We have had previous outfits where things have been.
All of a sudden, the trees are gone.
They're gone.
Right, and you can't, you can't put them back.
Right, and we, we really don't want that to happen, especially in this case.
Well, they, they'd be in a wetland buffer on most of those, there'd be a lot more issues.
Now, you just, you open up another whole issue.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, alright. So other questions? Are we ready for a motion? Alright.
Yes, let's see. I move that board finds that the waiver request for 175-10C1, 175-10B4, 175-10B5, 175-10B6, 175-10E2 are appropriate given site constraints and the proposed layout on the condition that a peer-reviewed landscape architect is retained at the applicant's expense to work with staff, the applicant, to ensure the final landscape plan meets the intent of the ordinance while addressing site-specific concerns.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, or unanimous, thank you. Alright, so we are.
Yeah, I do just wanna note that one thing about the outdoor, outdoor sales, and just like, I just wanted to make sure that's not, not missed. Thank you.
Some of you may have a version of the memo that has a typo and a number of conditions that got so helpfully caught. So I have updated that, but I. Um, so I have updated that, um, but I didn't want to. So it should read staff recommended conditions, one to twenty-six.
Right. And October sixth. Is the date of the memo.
Yes.
Over six, not five.
Oh. Yes, October sixth.
Right over seven, so this is a second question.
Thank you for my team of proofreaders.
All right.
So we have, we open after questions already, or are we going right to?
If you want questions, sure.
And I actually just one question falls up on what Larry had asked well before with the, the traffic report. Um, obviously with the, the traffic mitigation, uh, plan for the speed bumps and the, uh, the speed tables. And, uh, crosswalks on Winter Street is an acknowledgement that there's obviously going to be increasing traffic. There is talking about the traffic from the west, but, um, I'm a little more concerned about the traffic from the east. I know they're doing some adaptive, uh, this money set aside to do adaptive lighting at the, the Main Street Elm, Elm Street Light. Uh, which is good to see, um. But as we all know, that the traffic coming from Brunswick. Um, backs up quite a bit at that light. And I expect that the traffic at Winter Street and Main Street to take a right to Brunswick is going to back up further than it has in the past with this because of. Um, as, as the traffic report says, um, especially on Saturdays, there's a big increase, um, in traffic coming from there, but it shouldn't be as big an issue. Cause the traffic on Main Street is better on Saturdays. Anyway, I, I just want to know what. Were those two intersections besides, um, the adaptive lighting for, for Main Street? I, I know it's further away from your project, um. Were those looked at closely as far as what the potential traffic issues are, um. For that right turn onto Main Street from Winter Street or the left turn onto Elm Street Extension? From heading north on, on Main Street.
Good evening, Randy Dunton, Gold Palmer. Thought I was going to get through the whole night without getting that again.
Um.
You really have the bullet on you right now.
Um, you're talking about the intersection of, uh, Elm Street and Route two oh one, correct? Yeah, that intersection was looked at and capacity analysis was done. Um, you actually already had a project that was, uh, going to happen there. And, uh, what the applicant is doing is, is, uh, giving some extra money to, uh, kind of boost that, uh, already existing project. So, and with the advanced, uh, traffic controller, it should work, uh, better than, than it does today. As, but as far as, you know, so it, it'll probably be awash with additional traffic from the site and improvements. It'll probably work about the same.
Okay. And but as far as the right turn on Winter Street, as far as backing up there, was anything, I mean, there's, there's little that can be done.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, we looked at that and, uh, there was a lot of discussion over that intersection. Um, what could be done? As you know, there's a lot of, um, grade elevation hills and all that going on closely spaced. Um, buildings to the intersection. So we talked about, you know, what could be done. Um, to improve the intersection and the advanced traffic controller was, was kind of what everybody settled on as far as, uh, mitigating the traffic.
So. Oh, following up on, on that, of course, I know there's, uh, and Tom and, uh. The two Tom, okay. Anyway, Windcard of Traffic, uh, had talked about the, uh, fees going to, uh, main DOT. For them to be able to do all of this. Do we have any guarantee that they'll actually do that? Or will it, or will it just go into some copper of the DOT?
I can't speak for the DOT.
I know you can't.
Um, my understanding is that there is a project. Kind of all set to go and that this money will be contributing towards that project.
If, if there's an issue with that, we're on the same page as the town. We want that money to go to the traffic improvements. It will help our. Clients get to the, get to the building. So.
That doesn't the traffic moving.
We'll talk to DOT together.
All right. Look, Kate, three.
There was a kickoff meeting for that project yesterday.
Okay.
So it appears to be happening.
Okay.
Cause I, I mean, they just had somebody about a couple of years ago doing something with the traffic lanes and. One ninety-six and that I ninety-five and trying to. Uh, make some sort of timing, I guess. I'm not sure, but it doesn't always work.
All right. Anything else?
I'm sorry, I have one more extraneous question. That's why I write these things down. There's nothing to do with traffic.
You have, oh, I can sit down. Thank you.
How many more pages in your?
No, that's, that's the end of my page. I went to the end of page. Um, and this one has to do with the, uh, the snow and stall mitigation plan. The, I know they're, they're not very big streams, but the one to the north is, uh, we have a project for, uh, impaired urban street for that. The, the tops of Bear Mall area had to, uh, take a few changes for salt use and, and whatnot, uh, to minimize the impact on that stream. Um, I think from looking at the, the snow and, um. Removal plan that all of the, the snow will be kept on impervious surfaces. And the meltwater will go into the storm water treatment, uh, facility that you have on site. So, so the salt. Will be mitigated. There won't be any, any reaching into.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay. And the salt plant itself will minimize salt, though still meeting the safety. Back to everyone has, okay. Right.
We're going to talk about salt again.
No, I, I.
We know where you get the salt.
Right. I missed that one.
Oh, you missed that one?
That's good because that also, that puts it in the record too. That's a good one.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? All right. Are you?
But there's a formula they want.
Um, yeah, just to kind of dovetail on. I can't keep writing them. That, that goes along with the pad. No, I was just curious with the traffic movement permit that kind of specifies the mitigation, correct? There's impact fees, but there's identified projects in there, right? And there's, is there an agreement? Does that constitute an agreement that those projects got to be complete? I'm assuming, yes.
Yeah. So the way that.
Can just take that money and just do whatever they want.
No.
So there's an agreement.
I think Jim would be very upset at that.
Yeah, right. Okay. I can't tell you the timing on it because there's more funding that's needed than just our contribution. I'll say, okay. But presumably there's some sort of agreement, whether it's just a traffic movement permit or a separate agreement between the town and DOT. There's some agreement that's going to make sure those things happen. Okay. That's it. Okay. Good.
All right. I think we'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. Um, I moved to approve the site plan for one sixty-nine, top of Bear Mall Road. Next man, R zero five block zero two one D dash ten. With staff recommendation, uh, recommended conditions, one through twenty-six. And the findings identified in the staff memo dated October sixth, twenty twenty-two, um, changes as made at the meeting. To remove the, uh, the bullet about the outdoor. Facilities. Um, the board finds the site plan application meets the applicable standards of section one seventy-five eight and chapter two twenty-five of the document code.
Second.
Do you have any question? Seeing then all in favor? All opposed?